Welcome to Exploring the Ozarks where we tell the history and stories of locations, places and people that make up the Ozarks. Here's Matt.
Thank you David, your Hollywood voice gets better and better every week, man.
Thank you, I feel better because I wrote it out as well.
Oh, good.
And so I'll I used it too early, too early.
Not flying by the seat of your pants anymore, that's good.
There we go.
That's the story of my life. Hey everyone, thanks for tuning into Exploring the Ozarks. I am Matt Graham and we are here today at the Springfield One Studio for this podcast. Check out
Springfield Studio One.
Springfield Studio One.
If I didn't write it right in there, I'll fix it.
Okay.
I'll do that, I'll do that.
I'm just reading what I was given here. But check them out if you need to record your own podcast, put on a small play. We've got, you can play music here, there's actually a stage out back.
Springfield Improv is performing out here right now.
That's even cooler. So that gives you a good reference of what this studio is capable of, but this is our podcast room for those of you that are on Facebook and YouTube and everything else that we're on. So if you want to do, come rent the space or whatnot, just reach out to Mr. David Carr, my producer, right across the way from me here, so. But we have, you can find us on YouTube, Facebook, TikTok, Instagram, all the podcasts and podcasting sites like Spotify, iTunes Store, all that good stuff.
Yeah.
And we've got a lot of great feedback from this and you know, I guess it'd be a good time for us to talk about, we've got a list of sponsors that are coming in right now that we
We do.
We do want to give everybody a chance at this, really is what we're trying to figure out right now because we do have quite the list, which is a good problem to have.
Yeah, I agree.
But for everyone that's in the general public, David, tell them a little bit more about Patreon.
We do have a general support option called Patreon. I'm sure those of you that have been around, well, any online content will recognize the name, but basically it's a way of, I'm hearing myself and it sounds really weird.
It's okay.
Alright, anyway, basically Patreon is a way for people in the general public to support us. So we have sponsorship levels for businesses that range in various levels, but Patreon is meant for people that want to pay five, 10, 20 bucks a month to help support what we're doing here on Exploring the Ozarks. And honestly, you know, that's the way I feel like we're going to get our main funding in the long run because the more people that pay us, you know, five, 10 bucks a month, you know, you have two, 300 people doing that, that really goes a long way in getting the support we need for our production crew, for, you know, getting the, getting people here into the podcast too, because we don't charge anybody to come in here.
Right.
So I mean, anything that we can get through Patreon, through those kinds of, you know, individual support is always amazing. And you do get stuff out of it.
Yeah.
Swag, shout outs, things of that nature, so.
Yeah, we won't tell you what the swag is because we want it to be a surprise when we do it, but.
Surprise to us when we do it?
Well, yeah. Well, Exploring the Ozarks was meant to be a reason for us to explore everything that we can in the Ozarks.
All the history, people, stories.
Right, and we want people to be a part of it. So even on our Facebook page, we want people to be sharing, you know, their winter videos or pictures of their kids doing snowmen and things like that, you know.
That's something we did yesterday too, like I went out and did drone and photos and drone photos as well of all the snow stuff, so.
It looked good. Can't wait to see it.
I think it looked good.
It does.
I shouldn't toot my own, okay, I'm gonna toot. I'm really good at what I do and I like inspiring people is what it comes down to. I like inspiring people through the photos and videos that I do.
Well, and that's what Exploring the Ozarks is meant to be as well. We want to inspire everybody to get out of their four walls, get out of their door, go out and explore. So there's a lot of things we're going to be doing here this year that are going to be great for everybody to learn things that they might not know about the Ozarks that they can go explore. You know, we've talked a lot about just stuff that we've had personally that we've come up with. But we definitely want people to be able to share with us, so Patreon is a great way to do it.
To get this from decorated too, because we're going to be bringing a lot of artifacts and we'll show all those off one of these, one of these episodes.
That'll definitely be, I would think, a series because I keep coming up with more stuff anyways. So let's talk about today's guest. I'm pretty excited that we've got somebody here that is the backbone of our area, Mr. Bob Dixon, who's the Presiding Commissioner of Green County. Thank you for being here, Bob.
Thank you, thanks for having me. It's good to be with you.
Absolutely. Tell us, what does a commissioner do, Bob? Before we get into who you are, what does a county commissioner do?
Well, it would almost be easier to tell you the things that we don't do, but I can, I can give you kind of the job in a nutshell. We make sure the county functions. We don't run the county. We make sure the county functions. That includes appropriating the funds that are general revenue funds that taxpayers in the county pay. The county is really an extension of state government. So we're not like a city where we are incorporated. Now, there are some counties in the state that are what they call charter counties where they have a local basically called home rule. And they, those counties have a county council similar to a city.
That's like St. Louis and Kansas City.
Right, right.
You never hear the county council though.
Right.
It's always city council.
St. Charles has that. There are about seven or eight counties that have charter government, but a city is incorporated, so they're, they're kind of their own deal. But counties, if they're not charter, are an extension of state government. So we're delivering services, we're making sure local government functions. But the commission does not run the county.
Okay.
The office holders are actually independently elected and report directly to the citizens.
Okay.
So it was kind of a sideways step for you, because you went from being a state rep to a county commissioner, so you're still state level.
It is, it could be viewed that way, but the difference is, I was up at the Capitol yesterday and it's nice to go up there, but now I get to go home at the end of the day. Being home makes all the difference.
I always thought it'd be nice to get like a pilot, because I, I should tell everybody, I'm a political science major. And one of the parts of being a political science major is doing an internship and I did that with Bob at the State Capitol.
Oh, very cool.
So I was up there in 2015 and there's an airport right across the river there and I was like, I was always like, it'd be nice if I could like fly an airplane home.
I bet that's what everyone says that's in that office.
Weren't there some people that did that, like they had planes and they would fly home?
Some had their pilot's license, yeah.
Oh, that's a good way to have a reason to have a pilot's license, you don't have to drive to Jeff City.
Well, and you know, there's some parts of the state where there's just not roads that take you directly there, so.
That's true.
You're going to far northwest Missouri or you're going to the Boot Hill, it's a good five hour drive.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's long.
Absolutely. Well, so if you don't run the government or the county government, who runs the county government?
Well, the commission, again, makes sure it functions, but we have, so there's three commissioners in a county. My role as Presiding Commissioner is really just to preside over the meetings.
Okay.
There are some things in statute that are designated to the Presiding Commissioner, but we have 10 independent elected officials in Green County. Not every county has that many, but first-class counties have county auditors and so we, we have a total of 10.
I love it when I hear first-class county, by the way.
So I should explain, so there are
Makes it sound like really
Yeah, it doesn't mean we're any more special.
Right.
Means you have more responsibility.
It's really based on not just population, but assessed valuation of property. So, for example, Christian County became a first-class county recently and so it changes some of the requirements. There are more requirements that you have to meet statutorily. But, so there are basically four classes of counties, first, second, third and fourth. And in some of those, you know, they, they have really fewer office holders and then there's more responsibilities placed on each of the ones that are there.
Right.
But we have 10 independent elected officials and they, as I said, report directly to the people of the county. They're elected by the citizens.
Okay, so they're probably the most accountable, right? I mean, those are the ones that, I mean, I hate to use the term people screaming at them, whatnot, but.
They, they, we don't tell them what to do, I'll put it that way.
Right.
We all get along very, very well in Green County. It's a, it's a form of government where there, it requires a great deal of cooperation because the commission cannot tell an elected official how to run their office. In Green County, we have a, we have a human resources office that works for the commission. It's a commission department and they serve all the office holders. But those employees that are hired, if they work for the sheriff or they work for the county collector, they are their employees, even though they all work for Green County. And we try to foster a, really a county family atmosphere. Even though the reality is they're their employees and we're very careful, we do not and cannot tell office holders what to do. They each have their separate statutory responsibilities and duties and
They basically just report back to you, let you know what, you know, people are wanting to change or whatnot too, right? I mean, they hold open forums sometimes on planning and zoning or whatnot, right?
Well, so planning and zoning is a good example. That's something that is a function of the county commission. We do appoint a lot of boards, that being one of them, and there are, there are separate responsibilities for each of those. In statute, if it's a statutorily created board like zoning and planning, we have a planning department, which is a department under the county commission. We do direct those departments. But that's a, that's a board that makes recommendations and then the commission votes and we're under statute, we have to hold what's called commission court once a month where we hear those cases.
Okay, there we go. Good drop, good drop.
You're welcome, yeah. I was like, just the court shows, right?
Old in court.
That does remind me of the court shows, a little bit.
Like Law and Order, maybe?
Yeah, maybe like that.
Very good.
So you guys, just to clarify, because this is a lot of, there's a lot of procedure that we're talking about. So you're saying that the county commissioner is in charge of a lot of the boards and things that help run the county?
Well, we make the appointments.
Make the appointments.
Together, so like
Like I was on the history board for a little while.
Historic sites board is one, planning and zoning. Then in, in Green County, we share by agreement, we share some boards with the city of Springfield.
Right.
And for example, the library board, the park board. The Board of Equalization, which is the appeals process, if you don't agree with the assessment of your property, you can take that case to the Board of Equalization.
Important to know.
We have, for example, the Senior Services Board, which is a county established board by the people in a vote where we collect a local sales tax for senior services funds. They decide how to distribute those funds. So there are a lot of boards. But, you know, like I said, it really takes a great deal of cooperation and we are so blessed in Green County because everybody in the courthouse gets along.
Very good.
Yeah, we don't always agree on every little thing, but we work things out, we get along. And that's not the case in every county.
That's what I was getting ready to say is because you see a lot of dysfunctionality in a lot of different counties around the United States and Springfield or Green County's always seemed like it got along very well with each other and I feel like that's important for all the taxpayers.
It doesn't make the news very often, like people disagree and not doing things.
But you never hear the good stuff either, you know, you always hear the bad things, right? But it seems like
I think that's like a rule in government though, it's like if you don't make the news, you're doing a great job.
Well, there's truth to be said for that, for sure. You know, in some courthouses, you have county office holders suing each other or you have a disagreement with the court system where they're suing the judges or, you know, over budget. Or you have a situation where, you know, counties and cities are suing each other with the tax, same taxpayers' money. We're very fortunate here. We have a great deal of collaboration, not only inside the courthouse, but also with the city of Springfield and our other eight municipalities. Tonight, in fact, we'll have a meeting in Willard with the mayors of Green County. We do that on a periodic basis. So we, I think that that's one of the things that really makes this region, not just Green County, but this whole region, very strong. And we get more done because we work together.
Well, and you know, the one cool part about seeing Springfield from an airplane or whatnot is Green County looks like it is Willard, it's Nixa, you know, it's like there's hardly any green space between them all anymore, so it feels like all of us are growing together. And I'm from Nixa.
Okay.
So I mean, Green County's right across the James River, you know, when I was growing up, still is, but it's crazy to see that everybody is so close together, so you guys better get along because we're all going to grow right up on each other here pretty quick.
That's going to be one big sitting, yeah.
And it's a lot of change, there's a lot of change. I mean, that actually used to be Green County. I mean, when, back in the day, we started in 1833 as a county, this whole corner of the state was Green County and it's been, you know, as counties have been formed, it has been, we've gotten smaller and smaller.
Wow.
It's time for history lessons, guys, come on, keep going.
This is what we're talking about.
This is actually part of the show, so please, go into detail.
Trajectory of change and there's so much growth in our region. It's, it's really, like you said, it's, it's really something to kind of to see and like Springfield Republic are kind of growing together, for example.
I have to, well, I have to ask real quick though, what is, what is your like, your favorite story from like the origins of Green County of this part of the state? Like Springfield and Green County, is there like a story that sticks out to you from like the early days?
Well, you know what's interesting to me is the lost history. There are a lot of lost towns in Green County.
That's what we're here to do.
Yeah, okay.
There's something like 29 communities that are not incorporated that, and some of them actually
There's one I remember out near Willard, it's called Phoenix, I think.
Well, they're
It's like the quarry, Phoenix Quarry, something like that?
It's interesting you bring that up because they have, yes, it's right near Ash Grove and I forget how long ago, but in recent years, someone bought the quarry and has really brought it back to life. They're mining again and they're, they're doing all kinds of things.
It's actually the reason to have people living there now.
So what would be another example of a little small town that was forgotten about?
Well, so if you go to the intersection of Highway 60 and Highway 125, which is approaching Rogersville.
Lindenlure area?
Yeah, there's a a convenience store there called Cody's.
Yeah.
Well, that was the community of Cody.
Oh, I didn't know that. Interesting.
These little things hanging around are out there.
Well, yeah, because you go south of that and you've got Lindenlure right there on the river, which was its own big community for a while. Which we're going to talk about later on in one of our podcasts as well, so.
Have a lot of interesting stories about that. There's also this like old, what is it, going down towards Halltown on that road out there, there's like this old brick or stone building that has the roof, is all missing trees grown out of it.
I know exactly where you're talking about.
Used to be an old post office or something like that?
And that's what's really cool is there are a lot of old trading posts that turned into post offices and we've talked about that. I live in Highlandville on Woods Fork Road and it was a major thoroughfare from like Bull Creek area, Forsyth area to the other side of like where Union City is, out toward Clever or whatnot. And I have an old trading post that was, obviously it's knocked down now, but it incorporates with another one called Montag.
Because you also mentioned like Indians, like the Osage, I believe, would go through there and there's just a whole bunch of
Big thoroughfare, but all those, you know, roads and towns, you know, started with, with Native American culture and they moved through towns and they would, you know, use Indian marker trees and thong trees, they call them as well, to mark, you know, where water was or where trails were. And those turned into major roads. I mean, even 65 Highway, I-44, I mean, all those places were, started out as trails, right?
Makes sense.
It's, it's cool to hear all these little towns that, you know, they did go by the wayside because of other roads coming in and diverted somewhere else, but
Or the railroad came in or something like that.
Or the railroad. Oh, we should talk about Division Street at some point in this podcast.
I think we will.
The north and south thing, I think Bob would have some good, you know, input on that, right?
But it's interesting to hear that Green County shrunk more than it grew, you know, I mean, that's what's really interesting to me because you think of places like St. Louis County, and it's a huge county, but it was the same way, where it incorporated many, many miles of the area and then it kind of shrank down and now you've got South County, North County and all those, but so Green County, that's one thing I never knew. So that's why we're here on Exploring the Ozarks, is to find these things out, so.
I don't really know the reason for that. I would assume that part of that had to do with just the, you know, some of the land was not settled at all. So if you're going to have a county, you have to have a courthouse and actually establish that. And of course, the first courthouse in Green County was in John Campbell's cabin.
Oh.
And, you know.
Do you think maybe it was like an intergovernment conflict that made somebody go, I'm going to start my own county? And they just took part of Green County.
Hulk there.
There, there, there was a, there was a tradition, I don't know that it was ever codified in law, but there was a a tendency to try to make sure that you could get to the courthouse in a day. And of course, your travel is by horseback. So the county seats were generally in the middle of the geographic outlay of the county.
Think about it, most counties nowadays are fairly similar in size. Like when you look at, not, not all of them, but I mean
That's true, but when you get west of Missouri, the counties are much larger in landmass, so you get out west. But like if you compare us to Kentucky, we're very, very similar, for example, and, and everything east of here.
Well, you have to take into the topography of the land and everything too, because where I live, you know, it's up on a plateau here, the Springfield Plateau. Once you get to my house, it's literally drops off a cliff and then it goes south and that's where all the rolling hills are. So it would take them much longer to get to Green County if they wanted to versus Christian County or Stone.
Going over those hills.
Right, so it's never easy to travel back in those days by any means, but that makes perfect sense.
I find the history of counties to be really, to be intriguing, honestly. When you look at the different, not just in Missouri and the Ozarks, I mean, it can branch out a little bit. One of the ones I always find interesting is like Louisiana. It's like counties aren't called counties, they're called parishes, based off of the old Catholic church sort of. Well, it's French, but it's Catholic church-based, parishes for their different congregations. I think, isn't Alaska the same way? They have I don't know if parishes, but it's called something else.
Burrows.
Burrows.
Burrows, yes.
So I mean, you just go around the country, you can see all these different influences of not just the people that move there, but where they came from.
Right, the culture that they brought with them, absolutely, and that's
Here in the Ozarks too.
It's a melting pot, right?
Exactly.
So we love this. Now, before we get into any more politics, tell us who Bob Dixon is? Where is Bob from? How did you get to the point you're at now?
How did you get a trolley for your, you know, your election campaign?
Well, that I kind of fell into, but I'm always looking for unique ways to
I did some video with that, so.
Yeah, that was fun. So I, I grew up in the Ozarks. I was not born here.
Okay.
I grew up in the Ozarks. My mother was from the Kansas City area, my father was raised in the Boot Hill. And I was born in Connecticut. My father was, he worked for the airlines after he got out of the Navy. And so he, he was based in New York. And when the company opened their domicile in St. Louis, it created an opportunity for us to move back, for them, move home, but for us, it was a totally new place. And of course, I'd been out here a lot with both sets of grandparents, but they settled on Springfield for two reasons. The first was they were very interested in a school that they wanted to put us in that was run by a church here in town, which still operates. And the other reason was they wanted to be about halfway between both sets of grandparents, so.
Perfect.
And, and Ozark Airlines at the time was operating out of here and he could fly up to St. Louis to get to his work.
I've never heard of Ozark Airlines, that's neat.
That makes you a lot cooler that your dad's an airline pilot.
Yeah.
Or was, yeah.
He was and I had the opportunity to go on several flights with him over the years, but yeah, Ozark Airlines was quite a deal, but then they eventually, TWA bought him out and they had some service through here, but that's, that's kind of how I got to Springfield and, you know, I love the Ozarks. I, I, a lot of people think, well, I want to go here, there, wherever, and I have traveled a lot. I've been all over the country, but I love coming home.
We always say that same thing, dude.
I love coming home. We're in, we're in a perfect place.
For me, it's the time of year. If it's spring, maybe I don't want to come home because of allergies, but
Well, summertime, oh gosh, summertime. I always want to get out of here in the summertime just because of the humidity levels and go to the desert or something, but
But it is pretty, it's very pretty to come back. And there's always beautiful sights, just like the video was taken yesterday. I mean, you don't get snow like that very often around here unfortunately, but I mean, when it does happen.
A beautiful landscape too.
It's very pretty, right?
You know, even when you are flying in, one of my favorite things is when we're coming down out of the clouds and I look over and I see all the hills and you can see Lake of the Ozarks off in the distance and then you see Fellows Lake as you're getting closer and Table Rock, depending on where you're coming from. You just feel like you're at home, even if you're not from here. I have people tell me all the time, they feel like this is home, even though they visit here quite often.
Well, and the striking thing for me at 13 years of age when we moved here was, and I, keep in mind, we came from the East Coast.
A little different.
These people are really friendly. And they were genuinely friendly.
That's so funny, because you moved here from Arizona about the same age, right?
At 12, yeah, actually, I was just thinking about that. I was like, yeah, I was a bit too young to, well
To digest that part.
To digest the fact that, and I hadn't really been out and about in the community. I mean, I imagine you'd been out more involved in the community even at a young age in the East.
Not at that point, but I was around people to know that if you looked at them long enough, they'd wonder what was wrong with you.
Yeah, and they just want to talk to you probably at that point too.
Well, they were just, they did
Like, do you need some help or?
Yeah, they didn't make friends fast.
What always surprised, and this may have been the same for you, when I moved out here, what surprised me was how long I had to drive between places.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Because in Arizona, you go, I was living in Phoenix, outside of Phoenix, it's like three minutes away is the store and three minutes away is the
I have a lot of clients that are from California or the West Coast and they're amazed at how far they can make it in 30 minutes versus the two-hour commute it took them to go 15 miles, you know?
The ones I've talked to are also amazed that they can move here and basically be
Debt-free.
A Midwest millionaire and, you know, they're also trying to escape California, so.
I like that, actually.
Because we moved from Arizona, my dad was working for a company making fairly good money. And he decided to to leave that job because they were already doing layoffs, so he volunteered and then he became a Realtor, which didn't work out for various reasons, but he ended up going back to that company and making the same salaries in Phoenix.
Oh, there you go.
Here and it's like, oh yeah, now all of a sudden we're
That happens a lot here too.
It feels, it felt like we weren't, but
Well, I mean, I've had a lot of people move here just because they can work remote for these big companies now.
Yeah, and that's much more common nowadays.
It's much cheaper to live here, so your Midwest millionaire must start using that. So what
Midwest millionaire.
At what point in your life though, did you get interested in politics? I mean, what spurred this? Because this is a lifelong commitment for you.
So, I will say this, I do remember in 1976, now we moved here in 1980. But in 1976, I had a teacher and I think it was second or third grade had us do a little project on what we would do if we were president of the United States for one day. So we had to do this thing and write it all out and I was like, well, what is that?
That's a good question.
What is that? So we had to, I was like, what's the president? And we, you know, so it was kind of eye-opening to this whole world of politics. And then when the election of 1980 started, we were still living in Connecticut, I was enamored with just the folksiness and the common sense of Ronald Reagan.
Yeah.
And of course
That was a huge election.
It was a huge election. My parents were both Democrats at that time, had been, had, and of course, they were voting, but they, they had come from really democratic upbringing and voted in the Republican primary in Connecticut for Reagan. And I just was, I was enamored. And of course, the country was in a, in a, in a real financial mess and people were thinking outside their normal political boxes, which we still need people to do.
That's so funny. Well, it's funny because that's kind of been the way it was the last few years anyways, where, you know, some people like Donald Trump, so they supported him, some people didn't, they thought he was terrible, but then you saw some people kind of crossing lines to think about, what do I want for the future of the next four years, right? Which I think is hugely important for all of us to not really think of Republican, Democrat, or Libertarian, or Green Party, or whatever you want to call it. You know, I like the fact that we are coming out with new versions of what we can call ourselves with Libertarian Party and Green Party and things like that, but I think that, you know, as we progress through the generations and things like that, that part's going to be hugely important, because you talk about going across, you know, lines, political lines and going, you know, having this, this, at least we can work together mentality. And that didn't seem to be that much of a thing until the last eight years because somebody came in and kind of shook everybody loose a little bit. So on your side of things though, as far as what you do with the county, what are you guys proud of that you guys have done in the last 12 months, just for example?
Well, I'm very proud of our people. We have almost a thousand employees that work at the county.
Holy smokes.
Yeah, and they come from other counties, they live in other counties a lot of times. A lot of people live in Green County, but we do have employees that come and drive in. They're tremendous public servants. They're not doing it for the money.
That's for sure.
You know, we're having, we're having a struggle like every other employer of just trying to retrain and re
Retain.
Retain.
Yeah.
Retrain.
No, well, that's kind of true, probably sometimes, you know?
But, and recruit, you know, people to do the jobs that we are required to do.
Yeah.
And so we're, we're very proud of, of our people and we've taken a few steps to try to enhance, you know, the, the efforts to recruit and retain people and we also have done some construction projects. People know about the jail, but we're also trying to reusing our, our space that we have at the historic courthouse. We've undertaken some renovations in the basement, which are
No one's ever seen?
Yeah, major renovations. It's, it's where the assessor's office is, they take up most of the basement.
Well, what is the old jail being used for now?
The old jail is currently, we have a plan for it, but we're currently using it one of the pods for juvenile detention because unfortunately, we have seen a significant uptick in juvenile crime, juvenile violent crime.
Juvenile violent crime.
And so that has required some
Extra time.
Extra space and
Instead of they're going to turn part of that jail into a juvenile court as well, right?
It's, it's a juvenile courtroom and also it'll be, it'll be split. Green County Youth Academy, a lot of what we do in juvenile is they're not in detention, but we're offering services to really try to help juveniles and
Become better.
The family that they are with to maybe take a different path in life.
I did forget, we said court.
Oh, very good. But I think that that's a very serious subject because, you know, like we were talking before the podcast, there's, I want to say, I've, I've heard numbers of around 2,900 nonprofits in just the Green County area. Which doesn't even forecast out into the 417 area. So I think, you know, having that kind of problem is a huge deal. I think there needs to be a lot more attention paid to that.
That kind of goes back to what we had on this last week with Teen Challenge.
Yes, well, Teen Challenge.
Programs like that where they, they help people become better.
It's a huge mentorship program that they do down in Branson West, so do you guys feel like you incorporate some places like these nonprofits to help you in that department? Because we would love to help support you as well in any way we can.
So they fill a tremendous need because, you know, government can only do so much. For one thing, we cannot address, effectively address matters of the heart. And, you know, these, you mentioned
As bad as you want to, probably.
Well, we can see the need, but we don't have the tools, we're not, it's not our lane, for one thing. And a lot of times, those are actually spiritual issues that obviously the person's got a challenge. That's not what government's for, it's not what we're equipped for.
Well, that's why we vote people in that we feel, and that's, and I really feel like if more people thought about that, you know, because when I go to vote, I wonder how the person's heart is too. And it's hard for you guys to turn your heart off I wonder how the person's heart is too. And it's hard for you guys to turn your heart off to do your job, I'm sure. Because you see a need and you're like, why can't we just make something happen? But you have so much rigmarole to run through.
We do and we have to really just stick to our responsibilities that we're, that we're obligated to carry out.
By law.
That gets me fired up thinking about it cuz I, that, that's probably gotta be the hardest part of your job, I would assume.
It is hard, but I look at the nonprofit folks as partners in what we do. They, they serve a tremendous need. They meet a real need in our community and, uh, those are private funds that they raise. Now, we have had opportunities to partner with them financially.
Like all the grants too that you just were giving out as well from the.
Under the ARPA funds, which is the American Rescue Plan, um. To the extent that handing out public money is a good thing.
Right.
Uh, I think Green County has done an exceptional job and we did partner with a number of nonprofits. We had an open. Uh, contested process where anybody could, uh, open or submit an application. We had a citizen review panel. That we appointed that reviewed those and scored those and made recommendations to us. We'll be actually announcing some, some awards in the coming weeks.
Oh, cool.
But, but they really do tremendous work and I don't just put the nonprofits in there.
Sure.
I would, I would put that, uh, they're sort of nonprofits, but it's a different.
Committees and things.
Well, our, our church community, our faith community fills a need that, you know, that, that's their, that's their role. Um, I, I wish more folks would take advantage of, of the things that are available to us in this community. Which a lot of times we wouldn't see them in court perhaps.
Well, and that's what I was getting ready to say. It seems like, you know, off the top of my head, because I pay attention to that, maybe not a lot of people pay attention to. The need that they may have in the future because they're not going through it now, but then all of a sudden something changes, right? And you need help. Is there anything that the county has on their website or whatnot to try to find these certain? Well, let's just talk about ARPA funds, CARES Act funds. Uh, how are, how is someone able to tap into that? Is that an individual thing that they can just submit an application to? And that's where you get scored and all that by the committee?
So the, um, I'll speak to CARES first. That was the Coronavirus Aid, Rescue and Economic Security Act. That is passed and it's.
That's all gone.
That's closed. Um, currently, we have two processes. One is ARPA, which is the American Rescue Plan. And there is a tab on the website.
Okay.
Uh, where folks can go. Now, um, I think we have one round of small business relief left. It's not. Designed for individual relief. It may be a situation where somebody owns their own business and they are in a, a business of one. We have awarded those in a few cases, uh, small business relief, but it's not for individual relief.
Okay.
Um, the next round, we've done the small business, the next round, a- and we've done the nonprofits, that was the first.
Okay.
Um, the next round is for what we call the County Wide Bucket, which is projects that are. Um. In cooperation with the municipalities in the county, because they all got an amount of ARPA funds. It was fifty-seven million for Green County.
Wow.
Uh, and then the municipalities receive some, but there is rental relief available.
There you go.
Uh, where they can go back a number of months and also forward a number of months. Um, we partnered with six nonprofits in Green County to, uh, distribute those funds. Because we didn't wanna reinvent the wheel when these folks know how to do this. So it's like, it's organizations like Catholic Charities, Community Partnerships of the Ozarks. Salvation Army, uh.
Cross Lines, maybe?
Yeah, not Cross Lines, uh, but, uh, the.
Council of Churches?
I think Council of Churches.
Yeah, they're a big organization.
That's on our website too, but.
Very good.
Those organizations have done yeoman's work and our budget team has really kind of helped manage that. And I'm, I'm super proud of, of them because, um, our program in Green County was actually. Uh, was actually, uh, mentioned in a New York Times article.
Oh.
Uh, last year because the Congress was holding hearings on why did this money not get to the public? We were one of the counties in the nation that had gotten most of the money out and to the people that it was intended.
And accounted for and everything, that's incredible. That's a feat in itself.
So we, you know, we're, again, back to your point at the first question, we are doing the work without the drama every day to deliver the services to the people of this county. And I'm incredibly proud of our, of our public servants who show up every day to do the work.
Man, Bob, that's impactful.
That's a great way to end.
I love it.
Yeah.
If, if I could, um, just one more maybe thing? We started a little bit later than you think we did, okay?
A little bit.
Um, what do you think as far as in the next, we've talked about past, you know, we've talked about ARPA is coming out and still available, but. For the county, what are you gonna be proud of in the next twelve months? Carrying forward, what do you think project-wise, budget-wise, whatever? What do you think is gonna be the most impactful for Springfield?
Well, let's talk about budget, uh, without getting into details. We just completed our budget, but we. We, we were somewhat cautious with our budget this year.
Good.
Now, I mentioned retaining and recruiting employees. We have done, in the past, the county has been able to do maybe a one percent raise. A COLA, cost of living adjustment, but most of the recent history, there was nothing.
Wow.
And so our employees, they're very dedicated. They were staying without raises. Uh, and after two thousand eight, the county was having to cut staff.
Oh, gosh.
But we have been, um, we've been, I believe, very judicious in the way we have handled. Uh, the budget going forward because we don't know when the recession will hit.
Right.
Um, it could be around the corner. We're starting to see layoffs nationally at major companies like Google and Amazon. We're fairly insulated here in the Ozarks, but we, we don't want to put the county in a position where we have overextended ourselves.
Yeah.
We are very careful to maintain the reserves that are required by state statutes and then we do a little bit more. Uh, but last year, we were able to give our employees a seven and a half percent COLA, which is pretty significant.
Holy smokes.
Yeah.
Um. Makes happy employees though, doesn't it?
It, it really did. Now, they can, they can also earn, uh, one and a half percent raise based on merit. So if they were, if they were doing their job well, they could have received a nine percent raise. We had, we had folks.
Does this tie into like the Great Game of Business or Great County Game of Business you guys have been doing?
We do the Great Game of Business and we, we use our, we, you know, we open the books to all the employees we meet weekly. And they help to keep our costs down. We can't, we can't give out bonuses, but we can tie it to raises. Uh, and because whether we're able to do it or not, you know, um, we had employees who were extremely grateful, but we did that. Because we anticipated inflation by the end of last year.
Smart.
And we knew it was coming. You cannot print endless amounts of, of currency at the federal level. And expect to have anything but what we have. I mean, you have more of something, each unit is gonna be worth less.
Right.
So we anticipated that and by the end of the year, they said, you know, we're really grateful for the raise, but. It's the same thing we used to have, it's just everything's more expensive at the grocery store.
Oh, that's funny.
And so, and they, they said, they weren't, they weren't complaining, they were just saying, we're so thankful you did that.
Yeah.
It's good perspective though.
At least they keep it and then hopefully when inflation goes down, cuz it should go down eventually.
Usually, but you know, the thing is, is I'm in banking, you know, I do home loans with Central Bank and so that's all we talk about, is recessions coming, recessions coming. It was supposed to be here already, like you said, last year, you guys were prepared for it. Not a lot of businesses were, but it seems like the other statement you made. Is that Springfield or this, this entire four-one-seven area seems like it's pretty insulated from the national aspect.
We are pretty insulated, but it will, it will hit us. Um, my wife and I, incidentally, are Realtors, so to the, to the home issue.
Oh, yeah.
We're, we're seeing it on the, uh, sale and price of homes. Um, and, you know, you can relate the two.
Mm-hmm.
They're not making more dirt.
That's very true.
So.
So it gets more valuable, right?
It gets more valuable and then when the currency is worth less, so you, you know, you have basically your, your, your basic home. Uh, that would have been a hundred thousand dollars five years ago is a two hundred thousand dollar house. That is a cruel tax on the poor.
Absolutely.
Extremely.
And that's how the federal government goes about paying their debt.
Mm-hmm.
It's not right, but that's why I said, to the extent that handing out public money can be a good thing. I think Green County has done a very good job with what we were tasked.
Yes.
Uh, you know, we actually had the discussion, do we take this money? And our decision was yes, because. They're not, they've already spent it.
Right.
If we send it back, it's gonna go somewhere like California or New York.
Yeah. Might as well let our people have it.
We want our people who are gonna pay the federal tax to pay off the debt, that, you know, or pay the bills.
Mm-hmm.
To actually have something to show for it, so.
Good.
Yeah.
Um, I think we did the right thing. I'm very proud of our people for how they did it, but I think in a year or two.
Mm-hmm.
We will be able to say we were well-prepared for what came, you know. Yes, our, right now.
Yeah.
Our revenues are coming in at double-digit increases. Our expenses are coming in much higher as well. But when, when it hits, I think we will be in a good position. Uh, we have to be, we have to be cautious. But we, we've just gotta plan well, so that, uh, whether it's a, you know, a lean year or a year that has plenty, we're well-prepared.
Bob, I, I really feel like that's, that's an even better place to end it.
I, I agree.
I gotta tell you, Bob, you know, I, I do watch what goes on in politics in, in this area. I have friends that work for the city that are high up and things like that. I have friends that, you know, are commissioners and, and NICSa and, and things like that. Steve Childers is a good friend of mine. Um, and you guys are always very transparent, you're very on it and I think you all are doing an outstanding job.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming on our podcast. It means a whole lot to us and, uh, I think you're gonna see that the average person that. Watches our show is, is probably gonna be, you know, thinking the same thing we think right now on the way out of here, that things we didn't know before. Obviously, this stuff is new to, to quite a few people. Um, I don't get into politics much, but you have explained it very well. And I really thank you for doing that and thank you for coming on our podcast and wishing nothing but the best in the future.
Thanks very much.
Thanks, Bob. We appreciate you.
As he goes now for the outro stuff.
That'll all be edited.
I'm hoping too that, you know, just while you come up, I'm hoping that we can have you back on soon, just so we can talk about Ozark history stuff, cuz that like lost cities and other things, that sounds.
I will brush up on that.
I would be great. We'll, we'll give you a list of things. Like, hey, look, come, come next time, look knowledgeable on this list.
Well, and we're gonna do, you know, since I'm in real estate, I'm just itching to talk about what's going on right now in markets and stuff, so if you ever wanna come back and talk about that too. I'd love to hear it from an accounting or, uh, the, the county aspect of what's going on with assessed values as well.
Round table of the Ozarks.
Well, the last two years, everything shot up, like you said, a hundred thousand dollar house is one eighty, two hundred now. What does that do to people's taxes in the long run too?
We're gonna find out next year.
That's what I was getting ready to say. And, you know, once you start going into the assessments from years past to now. I know everybody's screaming at me when they call, how come my payment went up? Well, your, your interest rate's locked. I didn't do it, right?
It's all taxes.
Did you disclose it to the county, what you paid for your house, number one? Uh, or did your neighbor, you know, so.
Yeah, cuz they don't have to.
They don't have to because Missouri's a non-disclosure state, but that's a whole slippery slope that we could get into and I'd love to have you in on that conversation cuz you know both sides. Um, I'll do the outro now.
I love it, no.
Uh.
Yeah, cuz we could keep going for another hour or so.
Totally good and I, I wanna respect your time too, cuz I know you probably have many other things to do right now, but.